Call the meeting to order made nineteen twenty-two, Janes Town City Council. We'll start. The flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep. Now your heads, please. Everybody who come to you this day, I'm thanking you for another day alive, Lord, and the many, many blessings that you give us. We pray, Lord, you be with us tonight. Be with the council and the mayor, please, as we make our decisions, we hope and pray to be pleasing to you. Be with everyone that's here, their families and friends. Be with the leaders of our nation, Lord. If ever anybody needed help, this country needs help. Be with the lost, Lord. We pray someday they'll come to thee before it's too late. Leading, guiding, directing us in all things, forgive us where we fail, you. Amen.
Amen.
Hope everyone's had time to look at the minutes from last meeting, April twenty-first. If so, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion made. Second.
Need second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? First of all, we're gonna start with some old business, which is Seawater Road. Well, the water line project. Tyler's got some information that we're gonna share with everybody. This is from the bid package that the engineers has put out, put together.
We got the bids in, we opened them yesterday, actually, ten a.m. yesterday, there was two bids coming in. Cumberland Pipeline was the low bidder. They, um, theirs came in, construction cost at ninety-one thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars. Sensible design was the next bid at a hundred and twelve thousand two hundred. That's like thirty-six hundred foot, three inch line. That's construction costs. There'd be another, you know, twenty-four, probably thousand dollars worth of inspection and design by engineers. If they set it up and decide to go that route, you're talking low price. Sort of land imaging, you know, it was out there to have contractors look at it and bid on it. The low price, total project cost, a hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars.
So what's our options at this point? Can we, if we...
You, you have went through the procurement process, so you wanted your options. I mean, if you're gonna lay line, that's, that's what it costs, so you can decline, you can decline all offers and try to find, try to go a different route. I mean, I don't know what different route we're looking at, I have no idea. I mean, you know, we tried to get big one to bid it before, didn't get any, we got nothing. But if you take one of these bids, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollar plus project. The length of the answer.
But if we...
If we decline them, we have went through the procurement process, so we have, you know, with procurement, anything over thirty thousand dollars you have to bid out, we've done that. We can reject and, and try to find a different option and try, if we can find somebody else out there, we can rebid it again, we can...
So we can ask for bids ourselves, just try to get a low bid.
Is there any hope of any money out there?
Not right now.
We know we cannot.
Yeah, the Cleaner Water Act is out there, but I mean, you know, the chance, I mean, it's, there's three pools of money that's there, but the chances of getting it is, you know... They, they gave us part of that cleaner money, water money, that was whatever they gave us for the water thing, so...
We're worried about ten thousand five, but then we can...
Yeah, it's on the top of, you know, we, we've got ten thousand dollars out of this right now without touching it.
What was that, ten thousand or just getting the bid back?
It's getting, uh, it's, it's been engineered, um, it's been submitted to Division of Water, which when you do that, you have to, to lay the line in the ground, stake it over the main, it's gotta be engineered, stamped and submitted, approved by Division of Water, all that's been done. And then they, they put the bid packets together. They, they went through and like I said, put it out on land imaging like I was talking about last time. There was four contractors that come in. Um, there's two that's still out, though. I guess you could try to get, you know, see if they want to bid. Or you reject it and see if you can find somebody local to try to, try to bid it out. We can talk, I talked to Darryl down in work. Um, maybe you talk to Royce. We haven't heard back from them at all, and they didn't bid it. Whittle, out of Somerset, I think may be interested, looking at it. But, you know, that's, they, they're bidding, so that's kind of where we're sitting right now.
How many feet in line, it says about three thousand something?
Thirty, thirty-six hundred foot.
Let's be realistic. At either of those bids, even if the county helped with that, we couldn't afford our fifty percent of that.
We're looking at about, what, sixty thousand, probably a piece that the county would do, and that's if the county would. If there's a chance that, uh, that we could bid it out, or if we could get, I mean, some of the bids, maybe that do come in, if we want to look at those and see if we can get in an amount that is feasible, that if we can get an amount that we can get the county to match and get a little closer than, you know, where we're at. Is that feasible? Is that...
What was the amount they, it's fifteen thousand before?
Well, it first said half, because that was at the point, we thought it was gonna be thirty thousand dollars to do this.
Okay, then that's...
Yeah, and they, they said they would do half of it when we were at that meeting that night, but...
But I did talk to Gary Robertson one day, and I told him that it was no way that was, it was not gonna work at that. And he said, "Well, if it's not a whole lot more, I feel like I can go back to the magistrate's and maybe, you know, see if we can do more." How much is a whole lot more? I did guess, you know, a hundred twenty thousand, that's a whole lot more than thirty thousand, but I, do you think our options, is there people out there, we can get to bid that? Because at that point, we don't have to go by what they're...
Yeah, you, you've done, you've done...
We've done what we have to do.
Yeah, it's been, it's been out there. It's been, it's been put out for bid, it's a procurement's been met, um...
And we had to pay for that.
And we spent ten thousand to find this out.
Right, but it had to be done.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, we knew that going into it.
I make a motion that we reject the offers, the bids that have come in, and try to find someone on our own that can come in at an amount that between us and the county, we can make this happen.
I'll say with that.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? And just to add to that, I think what we would have to do is maybe once we find an amount, then get with the county and say, "Will you do half?" Or how much money will you go? But we just need to see who we can get to get some bids in and get something that's feasible that we can do. Uh, what about the one, did anybody ever get back with us from the one that Nikki recommended?
No.
That's Barney, or...
No, that was...
No.
It was over.
So we need to just put an ad out to take bids now?
Yeah, we can just try, try to rerun the ad that we already ran.
And try to just get ads into ourselves, here, have bids in for ourselves. Okay, so I guess that's what we'll need to do, is just go ahead and put out another bid thing, see if we can get something in that we end up, get a lower price on, and then get with the county and see what the county will do, see if we can take care of that.
We can, that's just from our local paper, and then just, because like I said, this was on land imaging, the way it's set right now, it's out there for all the contractors, and that's just gonna be a big job for them. I mean, it's, it's not, they're bonded, they're, they're ready to be inspected, I mean, then, so it'll be a little different when we...
What side of land is running out to there, cause it goes now?
The, it's, there's nobody out there, no, no. There's two houses there, they run, they run their own service from the roof. There's six inch line on the main road out there, and, and the two houses without water now are, the two meters are sitting on the roof, all the way up the, the main road.
So let's go ahead and get some written paper, see what we get back, and give it just a, what, two weeks' time limit now? Get those bids back in, and then we'll just have to address it then, we get those bids in. Uh, next thing we have is our appointment of boards. We actually, um, you, huh, let me know, okay? Okay. Appointment of boards, we actually have talked about getting with people on the cemetery board and make sure that everybody was, and I think Debbie has talked with them, and we got, cemetery board is back set now. Uh, so we just need to set an meeting, I guess, to get with, have a cemetery board.
Let's make a motion on that, to get renewed.
Okay.
Everybody that's on it.
It's me, Dennis Crider, Janet Wilkinson, uh, Lillian West, and you.
And they've all agreed, they've all agreed to...
They are all good, I mean, they all wanna help with this. Okay, do I have a motion for the appointment of the cemetery boards?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, I think Tyler has some information on the resolution for the Minnesota Road Day.
This is, um, same thing we do every year, uh, we just need to renew the contract and resolution to stay in the co-op. Uh, it allows us, or if, if an emergency, extra money. Basically, it's saying that, um, the funds this year we will receive from them inside the co-op will be thirty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. They, they do, they break it down, and actually, the initial amount will be twenty-three, and then it's broke out into emergency set funds after that, and two other payments. Um, but the total, total will be thirty-nine seven seventy-five for a road day money for the, for the next year. That, that will need to be, um, need to get a contract approved. And we also have, uh, the resolution, same resolution we do every year. It's a resolution adopted and proven, the execution of the road day co-op contract between the city of Janes Town, the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and the Esquire for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-two. Um, and I just need, we just need to have a vote in the, in the second, and actually, that's to be all broke out in the, in the base, so... Motion to do the contract, second, and all in favor, and the same thing for the resolution.
Okay, I need a motion for the resolution.
Motion made.
I need a...
Well, do the, do the contract first.
A motion for the contract.
Can I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, then we need to raise the motion for the resolution to be approved.
Motion made.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? I think Donnie Wilkinson's here. Do you wanna talk to us, Donnie, about...
If it's appropriate time, I'm happy to, and, and I apologize, uh, if the transportation shows up, you know we're asking for something. So I'm, I'm designated, I'm, I'm your neighbor, and I'm on the Board of Artworks next door. We're having a showcase tonight, as a matter of fact, so I was designated to come here and, uh, instead of being at the, at the meeting. Uh, every year, the council's been gracious enough to help, help us with our summer camp. Artworks is a nonprofit organization and is doing a, a fantastic job with young people in this community. Uh, I just can't express you enough the, what good they're doing with the terms arts and humanities, and just, just with education in general. Uh, and we have so many people that want to avail themselves of, of the facilities, and the prices are very, very low, but still, yet, uh, in these inflationary times, it's very difficult for many people to, to come up with the, the camp fees as low as they are. In the, in the past, you have, you all have been gracious enough to do ten scholarships for summer camp. Uh, the, the summer camp fee is a hundred and ninety dollars, so, uh, if you did the same as you did in the past, that would be ten scholarships, a hundred and ninety dollars a week, so it's a substantial contribution, but, uh, it is a fantastic cause, and, and I can't encourage you enough to support it, so...
Okay. And that's for, uh, from what I understand, kids who need assistance...
That's right.
To attend that probably can't afford...
In some cases, there are multiple students in the family, and maybe they can afford one, but they can afford two. And, uh, we have scholarships throughout the year, but for summer camp, that's, that is a huge, uh, you know, a lot of people, a lot of kids participate in all of their camps, so it's a week-long activity. Uh, they, they really, it's fantastic exposure, not just art, you know, the name Artworks, but it's involved a lot more than just art. If you haven't had an opportunity to go by, sometimes you just need to go by and see what takes place up there, it's forthcoming. We're getting a statewide and even national recognition because of what's happening with Artworks, it's kind of an awful approach, uh, and, uh, it's a lot of volunteers, and it's just, it's a work for God.
I'm gonna make the motion to refund ten scholarships.
I'd second.
Okay. A motion by Tony, a second by Terry, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed?
Thank you also, my, I'll, I'll report back to the, to the committee.
Okay. All right.
You're great, Jeff.
Excuse me, this is my forty-eighth wedding anniversary.
Oh, oh! You're a good olive, man.
Call, call on the committee's three.
Thanks, Donnie.
Yeah, he is...
Yes, sir.
Um...
Who are you, a license in Jameson?
He is.
Okay, the next thing that I just thought we probably need to talk about is, uh, Lake Fest is coming up, and I think we've got a little bit of information that we can share. Uh, Debbie has worked lots of hours. I don't know if anybody realizes how hard it is when you're trying to get entertainment booked, what all goes into it, and how many thought costs, and how many waiting days to get answers, and then it falls through, and you gotta start all over. So I know Debbie has put a lot of work into this, but I think she's got an announcement to make, that she's got somebody booked, maybe, maybe?
Craig Morgan! No, I said that! You don't need phone calls, I'm saying.
I'm gross.
Emails.
When we first got the list, I'm thinking, Craig Morgan, I've heard of him a lot, but I can't think of his songs, but when I go in and listen to some, I knew every one of his songs, I'm just the older I get, the harder it is for me to tell, I think they all sing the same, so I don't know who that is, but golly, he's got some awesome, awesome songs out, he's well-known, I think, and...
What one up, Neil? Your fan.
He's got, yeah, Redneck Yacht Love, international artist, almost always...
He's got, he's got...
I love almost, huh? Love it, yes.
Got some really good songs, and I think that he'll, I think he'll be a good draw for Lake Fest, and say, we're at this point, probably lucky to, to get somebody about everybody's, either prices outrageous, I mean, just went out of the roof, or, uh, they, they've been booked for all time. So I feel fortunate that, I think we've got a good, good draw there, and appreciate Debbie all the work to end that, because I know it's...
Good job, everybody.
Uh, another thing that we've kind of discussed a little bit, you know, we talked about starting movie night in May. We kind of got past April, cause the weather was so bad, but, uh, we talked about starting movie night, but, uh, of course, May's pretty much filled up. This is, this weekend's Lake Riley Monroe, we have this movie night on Friday night, and then, uh, the next weekend's Memorial Weekend. So we kind of thought, uh, just for thought, to see what you all think about, maybe try to do, uh, a couple, we, a couple nights a month, instead of every Friday night, and start in June to start the movies, and then, yes?
Just something that, um, that maybe may go great with the movie night. I've spoken to a number of vendors, uh, farmer's market vendors over in the Dair, about their interest in coming by for Friday, and they have expressed interest. I've gathered some cards, if anyone, uh, well, I'd be happy to share those.
Okay, sounds good. So I guess just with the thoughts of maybe during, start movie night, uh, in June, and what do you all think about just every other weekend, every other Friday instead of every Friday night? It just seems like people are, you know, in the summer, there's a lot going on, and every Friday is kind of tough sometimes for everybody to tie all their Friday nights, and...
Are you talking about just every other night in June, or every other night in the summer?
The summer, every other week, you know?
Right, every other night.
Do every Friday.
Every other night in the summer.
Do every other Friday.
That's gonna start movies late. That's, we always run them in spring and fall. Summer is gonna be, you're not gonna start moving at nine o'clock at night, yeah.
And so will that...
So just, I mean, in my, I mean, my projector's only so good.
How long did we go?
It's setting it out on there, you know what I mean?
How long did we go, this part down? Didn't we go up until June?
May.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, we normally done in April, we do in April, September, Octoberish.
Well, it's just, April was so cold, loud, right? That, that it was not even weather, really, in April, that we did... So just for discussion, that's just, I've...
The longest day of the year is June twenty-second and third, which is the first day of summer, that's the longest day of the year, daylight-wise, uh, then it starts to get colder.
It'll be pretty, for projectable.
We, we might be past the point of, of being able to do it.
Until fall.
Yeah.
Right now, you can do it at eight o'clock, eight or shortly later.
I'm, I'm hoping... It's still, we're supposed to do one tomorrow night, and I'm hoping that we can get it started later, I hope.
So is the city doing the one tomorrow night, or is...
Yeah.
It's the city?
So I guess what we need to decide is if we wanna try...
Tyler, Tyler can judge, we can judge, running more night, what, uh, what kind of timeline you got on getting started, how it shows up.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, we done with Bay some, I think, maybe. Maybe, maybe we try to do them in April and bring them out, and we push them to Bay, I can't remember. I just remember that when we, when we do do them then, he tries to start them at seven-thirty, and they're still not then, and I can't get started, you know, by seven-thirty, I can't see that, I can't see the projector.
And then we start again, what, September?
I wanna say September, I, I wanna say we do them September, maybe middle of September and into October.
Yeah, well, something like that.
So you all, like, kind of wait and see how it is tomorrow, and then kind of decide about if we're, we wanna try to do June, or if we wanna wait till September and try to start it maybe not?
Yeah.
August might be a possibility too, I don't know, really. When you look at June twenty-second and third, you know, August, two months later, I mean, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna get to start earlier than it is now, probably, in August.
It's a minute a day every evening, a minute in the morning, and then a minute in the evening after June twenty-first. Two minutes a day.
Yeah.
So a week after June twenty-first, it'd be seven minutes earlier in the evening.
Thank you, Doc.
Thirty minutes earlier in the evening after a month.
Yeah.
Of course, it is Friday night, but a lot of my kids are always young kids, so I don't know, you know, how, like, we wanna try to, to run something, you know, most of my kids, but... So we'll just see how, how it is tomorrow night, and then go from there.
If we don't think that.
They get the money tomorrow night?
I think they all are. I think it'll be beautiful tomorrow, it's tomorrow...
Yes, Saturday time, isn't it? It's spring, Saturday?
So tomorrow, just kind of light afternoon, Saturday.
It's gonna be pretty now.
Well, they may have changed, I have...
Oh, so I agree.
For Saturday, December or something like that. It would be fun.
Yeah.
It rains, woods dark, man.
I'm just not going up in the, ah, air balloon if it's windy and pouring rain.
Well, you're the first one.
Somebody sent me a text the other day and recommended a duck and bass, or like that, so it's, I don't know, we sit on it, I don't know, too many times in the past.
And you said that, like, there.
Yep. Okay, Jeff, you have, um, updates or something?
Sure, um, well, we're, we're proud to say that we continue to receive more sponsorships. Um, I think we're in the range of thirty-six or thirty-seven now, companies, uh, sponsoring either cash or in-kind donations. Uh, one of the most recent today, uh, Carter is, uh, providing, um, a number of product placement, the big stainless tubs. Uh, Riva's is gonna be putting, um, some flower arrangements, and I think we're gonna raffle some of those off. I gotta check with HK to make sure, what, if we need to follow any legal things to raffle them off, but we thought that'd be a nice thing to do, uh, with people. And we're also gonna be, um, providing some, because the forecast is up in the nineties, I think. We're gonna set a, a few, uh, around the square, not many, but a few, just for water, um, near the EMS, near the bounce houses. We have, if anyone's interested in taking a look at, um, how we got everything arranged, uh, we've gone over this in great detail with Chief Kearns. Uh, I'd like to introduce Debbie Schuman, uh, Debbie's our volunteer coordinator, and, and, uh, okay. Uh, the, the one thing that we would, uh, request of council, we would love for, uh, council to consider volunteering. Uh, we have, uh, four-hour shifts is what we're requesting, uh, we're requesting this of all the, the sponsors, um, and as well as VIP, and we do have VIP appreciation, uh, that will be in Joel Smith's office. I sent out an email yesterday, I'll be sending another one out tonight, uh, but we would love to have, uh, each council member consider volunteering, uh, for a four-hour shift. If, most of the volunteer positions are really just sitting in a chair, uh, at a parking, or at a balloon, or a bounce house. Uh, we just wanna give a good presence, uh, for the city there. Um, we've now increased, I think, our, uh, off-duty security, off-duty police officers or constables to five, so we're, you know, we're spending more, the projection will be taking in a lot more as well. So I think we still expect, uh, our goal has continued to be provide in the range of ten thousand or more, uh, back to the city in, in the forms that we discussed, uh, five different proposed, um, ways, um, whether it be, you know, arts, or, or history, or health awareness, or things like that. Uh, but things are moving, moving along very well. Any questions from anyone?
Sound like it's going well.
It is, we're, we're grateful, we've continued to do ads on the radio, um, and the newspaper, if you saw, the Times Journal, the front page of the Times Journal. Uh, thank you again to Tyler and, uh, to Daniel for their assistance in, in everything, leveling the, the space that we're gonna have, the bathroom trailer, uh, just coordination of efforts has been fantastic by all involved. So we're, we're grateful for the city, for the council, and for all of our sponsors.
Personally, I'm grateful for you for tackling this, and I know this has been a lot of work, and you have really put a lot of effort and time and thought into this, and, and I think this is a great thing for our city, myself.
Well, thank you, Tony, my, my partners, Aaron and Mark Blasco, come along with guitars, a model of a mandolin, uh, record from him and air. him and there. I couldn't have done it without any of them and certainly not without any of your all, your all. We're instrumental in stepping out and we hope to really give the city something to be proud of. Another event, it sounds like Lake Fest is gonna be a fantastic event as well this year. If we can help in any way, once our event is done, we would love to volunteer and help also.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or anything about what's going on or?
Well, where are the two stages? I know one is gonna be in that park, where's gonna be the other one?
The other is gonna be in Judicial Center or kind of the corner of where the Judicial Center is facing out, bounce houses, we've put those, we're gonna put those down kind of in front of the levee, that, and across from Hoover and Hart, Hoover and Hert, that area, because there's gonna be a stage there and that, so be complete visibility, excuse me, if you're coming in, you'll look and you'll see bounce houses. Boats will be in the parking lot, closest to the street in front of the Judicial Center. Classic cars will be behind there. We've got sixty-three antique fire truck coming. We've got, I spoke to Paul Kunde tonight at Woody's, he's bringing a thirty-foot hacker. We've had continued people respond and say, hey, I'd like to bring this car or this boat. We'll see what shows up, but we're hoping for at least, I'd say at least a dozen boats and at least twelve, fifteen cars. We've got two hot air balloons, one's being provided by Kroger. A lot of that is weather dependent. We're hoping to have the Kroger balloon early in the event for at least a couple of hours and then we spoke to the, the operator today, we'd love to have both balloons at the same time later in the event for the tethered rides. They like to do those when the winds are calmest, so that will be in the evening at six to nine P.M. Fireworks, fireworks will go off after that, after nine o'clock. We've got a videographer doing drone, still pictures, video. We've got a red carpet rollout in front of the bathroom trailers and in front of the VIP. Oh, what else? There's, there's just a lot of stuff going on, but it's all going very, very smoothly. The biggest thing again, we would love to have the city or the council members step up and say, hey, we could, we could give some time, you know, anyone, we'd be inviting to wear your Jake and Kate White shirt, if you've got one, volunteers, we're giving a free T-shirt. We are providing some T-shirts for events staff, we're also selling some T-shirts and Patrick Brining has given us, given us a deal and I think we're gonna have a total of hundred and fifty shirts in three different colors, black, turquoise and a white. That's about it.
One more thing, you mentioned the sixty-three fire truck or whatever touched base with Chief Landers, we've got a forty-eight international fire truck that we bought new and it's still here, still runs.
We'd love to have it. I, I know, I mean, I don't think any of the fire folks are gonna be here.
His family's married this weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and, and that's.
I just drive it down, I ain't drove it a long time.
Hey, if you can, that's great, we'll, we'll just have to figure out where it's gonna go.
I don't know, they've got the brake issues, we had some brake issues, so.
It's our many clients now.
We're bringing it early, anyway. We are, we are gonna have five, a total, I think, we're off to five off-duty security, one overnight each night to watch boats and we've got a generator, a stage and things. And then the day of the event, we're gonna have a security at the stage, we're gonna have a security at the VIP and we're gonna have a security at the west entrance by Bank of Jamestown and DeHart Law right there. We'll have, we got an additional six porta potties that we're putting over there in addition to the executive bathroom trailer. Weather's nice, it could be five thousand people or more, so.
And you have your volunteer cleanup crew as well?
Yes, we've spoken to, well, we're, we're continuing to work on that. We've spoken to Commander of the ROTC, we've got some, some volunteers there, we've got Lake Cumberland cleaning concierge, Sarah and Courtney, our Courtney funk are gonna help kind of manage that cleanup as well, so. And yes, Debbie.
Just a few things, we're also gonna be running a shuttle from the Jamestown Marina up to the square and we'll be, we've been in communication with the marinas, so that's kind of cool. Unfortunately, we cannot get a water taxi between the two marinas, like it's not so heads together regarding that, but also wanted to mention the Rosseys are doing the fireworks and the Rosseys fireworks, they do EBN FM station on Labor Day weekend fireworks and they ride over Thunder over Louisville. And not that we'll have that massive show, but Rosseys are, this is excellent company that do fireworks.
We're also gonna have Laker Country single cast from eleven to noon and then ninety-two point seven, The Waves, I think they're gonna single cast noon to one, I think, or so. And what else? We've got chalk, chalking, face painting.
Art works is doing it.
Yeah, art works is doing that. It's just.
Where's the fireworks? Where are they gonna shoot?
They're gonna shoot off behind the Judicial Center and then behind Upper Wells Statist Street.
The two that we talked about?
Yes, yes. And we've got, we've, we've got twenty walkies, I think, we designated who we would distribute ten to, keep ten in reserve. I think we ordered a couple dozen flashlights for the volunteers picking up the fireworks stuff. We've got, we, we, we've just been ordering a lot of additional things, rope and police bat line and just different things. We've got a, a video we can go over the, you know, blocking off the streets and that sort of thing. We still got the golf carts and, yeah, so.
Don't you have an opening ceremony scheduled at eleven-thirty?
Uh, I believe that is right, eleven, eleven-thirty. And what we were thinking, I talked to Paul Kunde today about that and that we would do the announcing from the stage, but you and Paul, if you're available, could be on the, the square. There would be one of the smaller, like a miniature boat that they have and we would pop a, maybe a sparkling cider and you'll little toast. We're not gonna have any alcohol open contained around the square. There will be some available for VIP in the appreciation and that's all being worked out with Kroger as well.
And what times the VIP could be?
VIP, I believe we're saying.
Two to eight.
Yeah, two to, two to eight P.M. Yeah. And you will be required to pick up a wristband with tickets. We've asked for every sponsor to provide a designated representative to pick those up from a volunteer next to the Joel's office.
That's in the management building, right?
Yes, the management building, Ricky Manis has offered that as staging for the band members.
Okay.
That's the green room. You put your chest in green room.
Any other questions? Anybody? Okay, I guess.
And I'll stick around here if anybody does want to volunteer, I've got spots and times and locations, so.
Okay. Sounds good. I think we are gonna need to go into the executive session.
I have a couple things first.
Before that?
Yes. Um, it's just, I don't know what we wanna do with this, this is that wetlands or the wildlands. I was contacted by Mr. Fox, I think it's, and he's with the National Heritage Designation Area, they're, he's out of Boone Trace, actually, and they are, I guess, trying to go get them up, the counties and the cities, I think there are seventy-something cities, forty-one counties they were trying to go in together with just to get, what they're wanting is support of these Kentucky wetlands. It's, it's East Kentucky pride as we fall in and the Kentucky wildlands, I'm sorry, I keep saying wetlands.
I think we're too far away from land.
Kentucky wildlands. Basically, it, I talked to Danielle Deviti and it's, it's more of a just saying that we're gonna be a part of this, in the Appalachian chain and we support what they're doing with trying to get, if, if they have to go through and, and, and get, I guess, their grant money, it has nothing to do with us, but we're supporting them and being a, a part of these seventy, seventy-eight, seventy-nine cities, I guess, just being a part of these wildlands. It's seems to be kind of a tourism thing, like when it comes up and it's something like, like, like the trail town, that's what it reminds me of. You know, it's something that, that if they look up Kentucky wildlands, it, you know, it shows Jamestown the support of it, just the same as the trail town, we're, we're a natural trail town, so when you pull up trail towns, Jamestown automatically, you know, pulled up. That's the only thing I know about this.
It also tells you, it also tells you wildlife is indigenous to that area and plant life and everything.
Oh, that's, I did not know that, that's pretty cool. But that's, but they, they just want support, basically, they're, they're saying it's resolved and the city of Jamestown fully supports the Kentucky wildlands, the East Kentucky pride and the application to the National Park Service for the National Heritage Area designation will participate actively through private and public partnerships where appropriate achievement. Um, he, the Mr. Fox, he was just pretty much saying that, that all he's done is just helped them try to get, I guess, their piece of pie, it's, you know.
It's free to us, we want to get exposure also.
Our name is, our, our city is in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very personal.
So that's a good thing.
But I, I guess we just support this resolution, we just need a motion to second to do that.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Um, this is their annual, basically it's a management letter for the same brief holding the NZ we do our annual audit with. We just need a motion to second, the key brief holding the NZ is our auditors and I need a saving for you, a saving for our council member, just a motion to second.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Give your votes.
That's a way out.
I'm taking ahead the point I was supposed to. They don't need that.
Uh, we're gonna move on. Yes, that's all.
Bob, do you have anything?
Well, obviously, we stayed in the, about the cemetery.
Okay.
They got these plans and then to that meeting.
We're gonna have a meeting, I have a schedule, Willing Weston has been through rehab, she's at her principal, so I was giving her all the time and we're gonna get some schedule.
I'll say that, I'll be here soon, you know, down there.
Yeah, but I'm gonna get one for you.
And the veteran section will be the first thing on the topic, Bob.
Tom, what about the ethics board?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we, yeah, we need to discuss ethics board, it's been out, we need three, three members, if you all can think of anybody to put on this for a week, it's something we don't have to ask them to see if they're interested in being a part of it. It's three, three members, three years' terms, I'm pretty sure we're, we're.
Do you think, do you have to do this math?
No, we, we kind of need some names and some, some we think of for Mason's next needs.
That's what I was planning, we have plenty of that in the committee.
Yeah, to, to come up, you know, see if, make sure they're interested in doing, you know, you know, the science of it.
So just kind of if you all kind of think of somebody that may be interested in sitting on the ethics committee?
Does it have to be city residents or is county resident?
It's always been, it's always been city, yes.
I was counting yesterday.
I'll read, I'll read the ordinance on it, I'll go back and read it, but it's always been city. When I look back, I look back on the day of the past ones and they were always, you know, citizenry.
Do you have any idea? We do need to go into executive session, I think, and if I can get a motion, you don't need to say executive session?
If we make a motion, we enter executive session.
Session.
Yeah.
Affirmative. All in favor? I, any opposed?
You know, we're gonna.
I'm fine with this.
No action was taken in executive session, so if nobody has anything else they need to discuss, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
，则 All in favor? I, any opposed?